Good evening, Cedar Falls. I will call this meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's committee meeting and we will start with a rule call from Madam Clerk.
Schultz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding. Danfield.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Harding absent.
Thank you very much. Okay, tonight for the Finance and Business Operations Committee, we have three items on the agenda. The first one will be to start with library interviews. And we will welcome Kelly Stern to help introduce our candidates.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Kelly Stern, the Library Director. And I'm pleased to present to you two candidates for the Library Board of Trustees. Michael Graziano is a professor at UNI. He teaches and researches on the relationship between religion and public education. And he also directs the Institute for Religion and Education, which works to help develop religious literacy. And then Lindy Rulovsy also is at UNI. She's the Davis Chair in Entrepreneurship. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So I believe we just go into, does council have any questions for our candidates? And they're both here with us. I can see them here. I sat on that committee to interview. So they're both here. Does anyone have any questions for the nominees?
Kelly?
Yes, yes.
I had a question for Kelly. I noticed that both of these two candidates are affiliated with UNI. Can you tell me on the board how many of the other members are affiliated with UNI?
Currently, there is one other faculty member from UNI on the board. We had five applications, five applicants to interview. And these were the two out of the five that the committee selected. So there will be three from UNI on our board if they're both.
And remind me, how many total members are on the board?
Nine.
Nine.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Do our nominees have any questions or anything they'd like to say? Public have any questions? Okay, all right. So, I'm sorry.
Perhaps they could just introduce themselves?
Sure.
Or let us see who they are here?
Yes. Sorry, we're a little out of practice because I feel like a lot of this has been on Zoom since, at least for me. So I apologize, I'm not very good at leading this because it's been on Zoom up until now.
That's okay.
Thank you.
I spend too much time on Zoom myself. I'm Mike Graziano, I teach in the Religion and Philosophy Program at UNI. And I work a lot with our pre-service teachers preparing to go into the classroom about best practices.
Thank you.
So, Michael, you answered these questions probably already. What's your interest in the library?
Well, I've always been a big fan of public libraries. I appreciate the services that they offer. I think it's an important community spot. I also have a two-year-old now, which gives me a sort of new and renewed interest in the library because it's one of her favorite places in town. We spent a lot of time there. And one of the things that led me to want to volunteer my time to help with the library is that I just see it as an important public institution and I'd like to give back.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you very much. And Lindy?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Lindy Rulovsy, I'm the T. Wayne Davis Chair of Entrepreneurship. I would say one of the things that may be at the point of differentiation is, one of the things that we work on in entrepreneurship is where are the underserved entrepreneurs that can potentially build wealth for their families long-term? And one of the things that we've realized is the importance of the library as a place that's ubiquitous where you can get information. The importance of the library is a place where you can access technology, especially when COVID strikes. And we sometimes had to send students to, if your access to a library is limited, can you sit in the parking lot and access the Wi-Fi in order to learn, in order to not interrupt your studies? Or things like that. So, my interest is very much along the lines of who are the innovators that have different life experiences that could potentially add value to our economy? And that is a big part of where my research is at as well. And we've won some awards with the Roth Library. So, we know in the context of entrepreneurship how important it is to have access to information, access to technology, 3D printing. I'm really excited about where technology is going and the place of the library in helping us figure out access to tools. And I also have a parent, my daughter is here sharing today. And I also have a three-year-old who's going to be turning four. So, they also have points of views on what is important and why the library is important to them personally.
Thank you very much. Councilman Schultz?
I just have a housekeeping question. Have you applied for another board as well?
I have, yes.
And is that a consideration? Or is there a limit on the number of boards of people conserve on? Or is it just?
You're not, well, I guess you can apply for as many as you want. I guess, we'll let Attorney Rogers answer that.
I don't think there's a formal prohibition on serving in multiple boards.
Okay.
It's better practice.
Because I think you're going to do well on this and then we'll see you in the future too, so.
That's lovely of you to say that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, yes.
Unmute that. I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Graziano. Thank you, Ms. Rulovsy, for your interest in serving our community. I think it's not every day that people step up to do that. Having had an opportunity to visit with you before, I just thank you. And I think you guys will both be good fits for what we need to do in the library. Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
All right. I believe that will end this portion because we'll address the formality of it in the council meeting later. Okay, so that moves us to the second item, which is item number two, an audit report by Lisa Roden. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council, city staff, and the public. In your committee packet tonight was the Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Each year, the Finance and Business Operations Department takes a lot of time to issue this annual financial report for your review. The report represents and reflects upon the city's finances and condition to the city's residents, elected officials, management personnel, financial institutions, city bondholders, and the public. The annual report is prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And the financial statements have been audited by an independent public accounting firm. Each year, the Finance and Business Operations Department spends a lot of time and energy preparing this report. This is completed by Director Rodenbeck, Paul Kokler, Kathy Niebrichall and I, as well as others in the Financial Services Division. On average, it takes us about 800 hours to compile this report. The annual report is made up of three sections, an introductory section, financial section, and a statistical section. The introductory section includes the interim, or the transmittal letter and the governmental chart of, or, excuse me, organizational chart. The financial section includes the auditor's opinion, management discussion and analysis, and the financial statements. And the statistical section includes finance and demographic data. And this is usually presented in a multi-year format. The city is required by state law to undergo an audit of its financial statements by an independent public accounting firm. Ide Bailey LLC was engaged to perform this audit. And they were here in July to do the preliminary fieldwork. And they returned in September for the final fieldwork. While they were here, they tested various items and have given an unmodified or clean opinion on the Fiscal Year 2022 audit. An unmodified opinion is the highest level of audit assurance on our financial statements. The auditors have also stated that the financial statements have been presented fairly with material respects and respect to governmental activities. The City of Cedar Falls is also a participant in federally and state programs. And we are responsible to make sure we have adequate internal controls so we comply to the rules and regulations with regards to these programs. The internal audit control structure is subject to periodic review by management of the city. And as part of the review, tests are determined to determine the adequacy of these internal controls and also if we have complied with the rules and regulations with regards to these federal programs. As part of your report this evening, you will find the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. The city did participate in 11 federal programs, just totaling under $3 million. These programs included funding from the Department of Justice, the Department of Homeland Security, Department of Transportation, and the Treasury Department. The Fiscal Year 2021 report was recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association. And we received an award for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And we do plan to submit this fiscal year's report for the same award after tonight's approval. We will also submit the Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report as required by law to the State Auditor's Office. And we will also post it on the city's website. There is no action needed during this committee. However, later on this evening, there's an item to approve to receive and file this report. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I thank you for doing such a great job on something that's so important. So, thank you very much for all of your time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. And then that will bring us to item number three, which is Review of TIF and Standard Incentive Policies, presented tonight by Economic Development Coordinator Shane Graham.
Good evening. It's nice to be back in the council chambers again. We'll see how this goes, the first presentation of the night. So, I'm going to give just a brief presentation on tax increment financing, also known as TIF, and kind of what the city's incentive policy is currently. So, just as a brief background, tax increment financing is allowed by Chapter 403 of the State Code of Iowa. They basically divide it into two different categories, slum and blight and economic development. Both of those have differing meanings and differing timelines for anything that's designated as a slum or blighted area. There is no sunset date, so that's an area that can remain until council decides to terminate it. If it's deemed an economic development area, that has a sunset life of 20 years. And you can do a combination of the two. You can have an area designated as a slum or blighted area and also an economic development area. If it is a combination of the two, then there is also no sunset date on that as well. Tax increment financing is a reimbursement. So, for projects that are eligible to be repaid with TIF funds, those funds are paid upfront from another city source and then reimbursed through TIF. So each year, the city creates debt obligations to those funds that are cash flowing the projects through an inter-fund loan resolutions, which I believe there's probably a handful of those on the council agenda tonight for consideration. So, for an example, our local option sales tax fund may pay for the costs of a new street in a TIF district. And then we create that loan from that local option sales tax fund for the TIF to repay. And then just for general information, there is no balance of cash sitting in a TIF fund since it's a reimbursable process. So each year, by December 1st, the city has to file a report to the county auditor certifying what projects are requested to be paid from the TIF fund. And then the county then disperses those funds to the city in the following budget year. So, for example, any amount certified by December 1st of this year will be for the budget year FY '24, which starts July 1st '23 and ends June of 2024. And I believe that report is on the council agenda tonight for consideration. And then, in addition to filing that report with the county auditor, each year by December 1st as well, the city is required to file a report with the Iowa Department of Management, which summarizes the TIF activity for the prior fiscal year. And again, that's a document that is prepared by finance staff, that city council approves, and then sent to the state. So, not all tax levies are impacted by TIF. So, there are a certain couple of things that are not eligible to be repaid through TIF debt service, including the school, the city, and the county, and the physical plant and equipment levy. I'll keep, am I okay to keep on my, thank you. So, for this tax year, the current city tax is $34.51 per $1,000 valuation. What's eligible to be, for TIF eligible is $30.39. So, it's about a $4 amount out of your tax bill that's not TIF eligible. So, this is just kind of a real basic example. So, say you have a vacant piece of ground that's valued at $200,000. Build a building on it that has a $2.5 million valuation. That increment created then is 2.3 million. So, this is just the increment created from a project. So, that $200,000, say the taxes on that doesn't get impacted by TIF. It's just the increment that a project creates. So, for an example, this was for a project in our downtown area. There was a remodel of an existing downtown commercial building. That building had an assessment prior to the project of $385,000. The estimated assessment after that project was completed was $735,000. So, the increment created was $350,000 from that project. So, again, you're not looking at that existing $385,000, just the increment that the project creates. So, I just want to go through real briefly and just go over the different TIF districts that we have in Cedar Falls. The first one is our downtown area. This downtown area was established back in 1986. And it was designated as a blighted area. Since it was done prior to 1994, there is no sunset date on it. There's two different things. If it's designated as either a slum or blighted area, or if it's established prior to 1994, there is no sunset date. So, this district has existed since 1986 and will continue to do so unless city council decides to take action to stop that. Our next district is College Hill. The boundaries of this goes from about Campus Street on the west side, Olive Street on the east, and then 23rd Street on the south, and 20th Street on the north. It might be kind of hard to see on the map, so I figured I would just explain those boundaries. This was established in 2011. And I believe this district was designated as both a blighted area and an economic development area. So therefore, there is no sunset date on this area. The next area is our Pinnacle Prairie TIF. And this extends from Green Hill Road on the north down to Viking Road on the south. And it kind of heads further to the east, almost to Cedar Heights Drive. And then on the west side, it even gets over towards the Public Safety Building and Main Street. This was established in 2006. And this was designated as an economic development area, so it does have a 20-year expiration date. The next district is our South Cedar Falls, Urberville New Area. And this is bounded by our city limits on the west side, Highway 58 on the east, Highway 20 on the south, and Technology Parkway on the north. This was established in 2018. And this was designated as an economic development area, so this one is limited as well to the 20-year expiration date. And then our largest TIF district is our Unified Highway 58 Corridor TIF District. This one has multiple established dates. There's been numerous amendments to add area throughout the years. So every time there's an amended area, each amended area is limited to the 20-year timeframe because they are designated as economic development areas. So, the earliest one was done in the mid-'90s, all the way up until about 2020, when we expanded our Urberville New Area to cover our industrial park expansion area. So, this is the south end of the unified area where it covers most of our industrial park along the south side of town. And then this slide, it is connected through Highway 58 up to the northern Cedar Falls Industrial Park, which is off of Levercy Road. And again, these were all done at multiple establishment dates. So, they are all, like, the north Cedar Falls one, I think, was done in 2011 or '12. So that one has a 20-year and so forth. So, before I go into what our current policy is, when the city enters into agreements for, say, a downtown project where there's tax incentives or TIF rebates involved, when staff drafts the development agreements, here, there are some assumptions that we go off of. One, we got to look into the fact that there's a 90% commercial rollback tax. So if it's a million-dollar building, they're only getting taxed for $900,000 of that. So, those are things we have to kind of take into account when looking at what the potential rebate and what the potential income is on that. Also, we're looking at no increase or decrease in the tax rate over the rebate period. So if there's a five-year rebate, when we draft the agreement, it's based on the tax rate of the day I'm doing it, the day you're looking at it. So there's no guessing what the tax rate might be three, four years from now. Again, no increase in the value of the property. Again, we're looking at the property as it sits today and what the estimated assessment is. There's no telling what the assessor might do in three or four years and see what the assessment is. And then it also doesn't factor the non-direct benefits. Will this project add new jobs? Will new homes be constructed because of the increase in jobs or other spending in the community? Okay, so I just want to go over what our current incentives are in our different districts. So in our downtown area, the policy is to provide a five-year, 100% tax rebate. Again, and this is based on our TIF rate of $30.39 as it sits today, on the increased valuation of a project with a minimum investment of $200,000. So, for that example, I said earlier, there was a $350,000 increase in that project. So that was eligible and that project received a five-year tax rebate on that increased valuation that the project created. In the College Hill area, it's the same policy. The city, again, provides a five-year, 100% tax rebate on the increased valuation with a minimum investment of $200,000. So again, that example, I was referring to the increased building valuation of $350,000 on that one project would get a five-year, 100% tax rebate. That would not exceed $47,000. And that was based on the $350,000 increase valuation and figuring out what the current tax is of that tax rate of $30.39 per thousand. And all of that is within the development agreements that ultimately get approved by city council. For industrial projects that are located in the industrial parks, the city generally provides one acre or so of developed industrial park land for each 10,000 square feet of building area. That can fluctuate a little bit depending on the needs of a project. You know, if a project has a large, they need a large parking area, a large movement area for trucks. They got a lot of semis. You know, they might see a 1.8 or, you know, closer to a two-acre project for maybe a 15,000-square-foot building. But I think what the goal is, is that, you know, we're not seeing a lot of undeveloped land being not utilized. So we're not, you know, say, donating a 10-acre parcel for a 20,000-square-foot building where three-quarters of the land is sitting there just being in grass. So, we do have some minimum building valuations of $40 per square foot. And then if the building valuation is 1.2 million or more, the city can provide for a five-year partial property tax abatement. And you can see the percentages there where it starts at a 75% abatement. So your first year, you would be paying 25% of your overall tax. And then it goes down by 15% over five years to where when you get to year six, then you're paying your full taxable value. If the valuation of the building is between 1 and 1.2 million, the city can provide for a three-year partial property tax abatement of 45% each year. And then if there's a building valuation that's less than $1 million, there's no. And then, if there's a building valuation that's less than a million dollars, there's no tax incentives at all. Also, as part of our industrial park, we do have the Technology Park, which does allow for professional office projects. Similar incentives, whereas the city would provide one, one acre or so of developed land for every seventy-five hundred square feet of building area. This one, we require minimum building valuation of seventy-five dollars per square foot. And again, if the building valuation's one-point-two million dollars above, the city would then provide for a five-year tax rebate. Now, this was an actual rebate other than an abatement because the, the tax abatement is for industrial projects. This is professional office, which does not qualify for the tax abatement. So, it would actually be a tax rebate. And then, again, if the valuation is one-point-two, it would be the five-year sliding scale. If it's between one and one-point-two, it would be the forty-five percent over three years. And if the building valuation is less than one million, then no tax incentives would be provided for the project. So, outside of the downtown and the College Hill areas, the city does not provide incentives for commercial developments. You'd see, you know, in our South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area, we've had some recent development with the Fleet Farm, and there's a new Holiday and a new gas station. Those did not get any sort of incentives. Those were all done privately by the developer. So, the city did not provide any incentives for those projects. And currently, the city does not provide any incentives for any residential development. So, again, it's more for industrial-type projects and commercial projects that are more located in our downtown College Hill. We'll see some mixed-use buildings, both in our downtown and our College Hill areas that have, have received incentives. But outside of that, no commercial incentives. And then, at this time, we do not have any, any residential incentives. So, that's a general overview. I might have went over it a little quick. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions from council?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Shane, I just wanted to double-check. Do you have a couple of the dates on the Unified Fifty-Eight District with the late nineties establishment? Have some of those fallen off of that map, or did we renew them on some of the earlier dates? I'm curious.
Yeah, Jennifer, I know, has the dates. We did have one area expire in two thousand and sixteen. That encompassed the Target Distribution Centers. And so, that came off the books, I think, in two thousand and sixteen. But we have dates ranging from, I think, one expires in two thousand and twenty-four, and then some, one is two thousand and twenty-three. So, we have those dates. Like I said, every time you establish a new area, you got, start a twenty-year on that area, twenty-year on this area. So, yeah, there's, there's multiple dates.
Okay. And then, just one follow-up on the valuation of the incentivized projects. Seventy-five dollars per square foot in value, is that the total value or the improved value? Is that just the total valuation of the property because it's being built on bare land?
That would just be the building valuation only.
All right, got it. Thanks.
Anyone else have any? Councilman Schultz?
So, you were saying that the northern part of the Fifty-Eight Corridor has added or taken away since two thousand and eleven? Or is it, has bits and pieces been added on the northern part of the Fifty-Eight Corridor?
Oh, you mean where the northern Cedar Falls Industrial Park is?
Yeah.
That was created, I believe, in two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven, and then merged with our southern industrial park. So, that's why we call it the Unified. Now, so, there was areas at our southern industrial park that were created in the nineties and early two thousands. In two thousand and eleven, we connected that with our, and created the Northern Cedar Falls Industrial Park TIF to connect those two. So, there hasn't been area, there hasn't been any area taken away from the northern park since it was created about ten years ago.
Is it available to be expanded, or what would need to be done if we? Are we to the, first off, are we all the way to the city boundary to the north? Or is there still further?
No, I, I'll go back. I'll go back to that map real quick. It's close. It ends the, if you can see the, on your map there, Levercy Road is the city limit line on the east side. It does, it does go north all the way to...
One more handle change?
Yeah, it goes up to Lone Tree, to Lone Tree Road.
Okay. And you could expand to the west or the east on that? Or, excuse me, I guess, to the west because we'd be to the border on the east?
Yes.
Or would you have to create a new TIF?
You could do, you could do an amendment to an existing urban renewal. Like I said, we, this unified one, we've amended six or seven times over the years to either add new areas. So, certainly, if we could propose an amendment to add additional area, it would have to be approved by city council.
And you'd have to be continuous?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's not, then you would have to create a new one.
New one, right. And does that change the date of creation? Because this has a twenty-year expiration. Would it just, would it still be two thousand and thirty-one when this would expire? Or does it create a new date?
Any new areas you add starts, is a new timeframe.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you were to amend or even create a new, that twenty years is separate from any other area.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Sires?
I have a quick question, Shane. What constitutes a blighted area?
So, I anticipated that question. In the State Code, Chapter four oh three of the State Code, they give some lengthy definitions of what blighted areas are, what slum areas are, what economic development areas are. I mean, if you'd like me to read them, they're kind of lengthy, or if you want, I can provide them to you. But basically, it's up to the city to determine whether or not there's either slum areas, blighted areas. You know, they're pretty general, talking about if there's any, anything for, you know, that endangers life or property, you know, things like that, like inadequate services, you know, infrastructure, pretty general stuff like that. And if the city determines those, then that's how it gets put into the language of the plan. And that's what constitutes then what area it's determined to be.
Okay, I would like a copy of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Sires, I, I think some of it is unfortunate terminology. I have, I've had that same question because it, you know, who wants to say that we've got a slum and a blighted area?
I don't believe we do.
Yeah, I don't believe we do either.
That's all.
So, that, I think it's an unfortunate terminology.
Thanks, Shane. Yeah, I, I can, I can provide it. Yeah, I was looking at this, the, Chapter four oh three is about twenty-eight pages. That talks about urban renewal, and it talks about those, those sort of things. What's the definition of slum? What's the definition of blight? So, yes, I can certainly get that to all council.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. So, as I look at this, I wonder to myself, like, the question's slum and blighted with no sunset. If we improve it over X number of years, it would get to the point of being, say, pretty nice. Then, if the tax dollars keep getting diverted to the TIF district, aren't the citizens losing out on that revenue for the rest of the city budget? Am I misunderstanding or not?
I guess I'm not sure kind of what the, so you're talking, so say, if the area over time is not necessarily blighted or slum anymore? Is that what you're saying? Is it based on the improvements that, you know, that the, the district has created over the years?
Right, it's built up and improved. It's no longer blighted. Wouldn't that, as a citizen, I see the TIF money being diverted to and rebated back to developers who then financed their projects? But at some point, the citizen seems to me to be losing out. Am I...
I mean, you are, you are, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, yes.
Um, that is correct. Anything that's in a TIF district does mean that that share is not going to our general fund or the school's general fund or the county's general fund. That is true. So, when we talk about TIF projects, that's why we always want to make sure everybody understands that. But we also, it is our economic development tool to be able to fund different projects and keep them going. Now, to answer your question about the slum and blight, I guess it's, it is kind of the purpose of TIF, that you do want to develop the area. But, but you are, I just want to state, you are correct. It does take money away from the general funds. That is true.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Councilman Cruz?
If I looked at the example on page two oh four, the very basic one that you had with a two-hundred thousand dollar vacant lot, two-point-five million improvement incremental increase, two-point-three, what if this property had something on it that was tore down worth a couple hundred thousand? Then, what is the starting point? Do you, or what's the date of valuation for these TIF calculations? Is it an average of the valuation over a number of years prior to the start? Or is it January first of the year before, or how does that work?
It'd be January first. So, yes, so if a project were to come through today and the building was still there, we would look at the most recent assessment and say, okay, this building is, has a two-hundred thousand dollar valuation, then we do not include that amount in our development agreement. But if they knock something down today and then came and, and entered into an agreement, say, in April or May of next year, and then January first, the assessor has it zeroed out, then that's what we would look at at the time.
So, isn't that, that truly incremental increase? When, if a developer tears down structures that are there and waits, that's kind of gaming the program, isn't it, a little bit?
I mean, I guess it just depends on when they were to come forward and, and want to enter into a development agreement. I mean, I, I don't think the city has seen that often at all, where a project, they decide to tear something down, knowing that, hey, in eight months or the following year, I'm going to come talk to the city. Usually, those conversations start early enough where, you know, before they even decide to knock something down or renovate anything.
But the development agreement could reflect valuations over an average of a couple of years before? Is my understanding correct?
Yes, I mean, this, I mean, as, as the city, we could, we could word those agreements, however. Like, if we wanted to say an average of the last five years, that's something that the city certainly has the ability to do.
I'm just thinking to be fair to the taxpayers and, and the other people that get tax revenue. That's what I'm looking at, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm curious, Jen, would you be able to provide us numbers of an example? The thought crosses my mind of comparing, what would it be to sunset, one of our blighted areas? If they're no longer blighted, what would that kick back into each of those three parties? Can we see those numbers sometime in the next month?
Sure, well, I can tell you, like, the downtown generates about two million dollars a year in TIF revenue. That already includes that we've released five hundred thou, you'll see on the agenda for tonight, that, that's releasing five hundred thousand back. So, that's one of the things we've also tried to do, is we don't have to every year do the full increment. We can do a certain amount. So, but if you just take the two million on its face, you know, from a property tax, we say about a third, a third, a third, that's not quite right. It's more like thirty-eight percent, thirty-nine percent. I mean, it's not quite that. The school has the biggest portion, and the county would have the least amount. So, about that is what you would be looking at if you take that two million.
Okay, any further questions from anyone, from Mr. Graham? Okay, I think we're good to go. Thanks so much. All right, so that wraps up the Finance and Business Operations Committee, and I'm going to hand this off to Madam... Because we have an absence tonight, so we need to make a little change here.
In the absence of the chair, I call this meeting of the Community Development Committee to order. The first item of business is the nomination and election of a temporary chair. Are there any nominations for a temporary chair?
I'll nominate Mr. Sires.
Any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, then I ask those in favor of Chair, or Chairman Sires as a temporary chair to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? I declare Councilmember Sires to be the temporary chair and turn this meeting over to the temporary chair.
Well, thanks for your confidence, everybody. We'll bring this committee meeting to order. We will call up first Cedar Valley Economic Development, Jim Brown.
Thank you, Chairperson Sires. Excuse me. See if he's got this up and running. While Stephanie's doing that, just house cleaning, we are still housing our, the offices of the CFE DC and taking full advantage of the meeting rooms and such at the Gravitate Space at two-hundred and State Street. Most of you know that, but just for your information. It's great to be in front of you. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you to give an update from a year ago when we're introduced into the public and private partnership with the City of Cedar Falls and the CFE DC. What I'm going to do the first couple of slides is maybe answer the question, maybe from you folks, from maybe the public at large, generally speaking, why does Cedar Falls need, Cedar Falls need an economic development corporation? What I'll draw your attention to is the top-left part of this slide, where there's private and, there's private investments, projects, and leads that will come through from around the world, frankly. And they'll typically land in the laps of the Iowa Economic Development Authority. You've heard of the IEDA before. They're the state level for economic development. And to the right of that, you'll see their main objectives, Business Attraction, Main Street Iowa, and state incentives. And then, typically, that group would put it down to our Regional Economic Group, which is Carrie and her group, you all know the growth Cedar Valley. And their tasks, some of those tasks are regional attraction and retention, workforce development, and innovation. Now, typically, I think those sorts of leads, and these would be typically leads, much like Shane just mentioned, that might be taking advantage of our South Industrial Park. It's a manufacturing company. They're building such-and-such widgets. They're looking for the incentives. They're looking for what's possible from a local level. And when I say city down below, as things go down to the city, that's also typically where we're seeing the public investments go up. We see that count, in countless different opportunities around the city. Lastly, I'll mention the city typically will be Shane because he's the business development manager for the city. But it's also other staff, and ultimately, if things are to be adopted or changed, it would be also up to the city council. So, keep that in mind as we're kind of, as I made this slide moving back and forth. So, obviously, you might gather from now, we believe that an economic development corporation in the midst between regional and city is ideal because we'll develop partnerships. The nonprofit status I mentioned to you a year ago is an extremely large benefit for development. And then, redevelopment projects, again, probably not the industrial park south or north, but some, maybe some great opportunities with the high school or different infill areas from within the community. And, and lastly, I'll say this too. I don't necessarily appreciate the funnel I created. Oftentimes, it'll be maybe a big circle around the regional economic development in the city. Think of the River Project, how that was all collaborative effort along those lines, where some of the other types of projects in EDC might come in, may not include all, all three of them. So, my board put together the vision statement. Before that, they wanted to take a look, a look at the outlook of the city and our organization. And so, you folks or the council before you place the responsibility of economic development under the, the guidance of responsibility of the city administrator. And that relationship has been great for the ultimate goal of improving the competitiveness of our community. So, our solution is creating the CFE DC back in two thousand and twenty-one and a committed group of visionary folks, many of whom behind me now, who support a growing business environment and direct strategic local development efforts in concert and in partnership with local government. So, now, we are a public-private partnership, working every day to make Cedar Falls the best place to live, work, and play. We've incorporated, filed as a five-oh-one-C-four nonprofit corporation, and we're privately and publicly funded. I'll point out that the private aspect of the funds that we have received are two-thirds of the, of the total amount, which I think is the way it should be, mostly private. So, our overview at the bottom starts with trust towards this partnership, towards what we're looking for, or what the stakeholders are looking for in development, collaboration, leadership, and casting that vision for the future. What we do is navigate the waters of economic development. We support those initiatives, and we connect with those various stakeholders and advocate. So, and look at the progress through the past, and then capture that as we look also to the future. This is an exclusive list or anything along those lines. But this type of partnership includes master planning, zoning and code updates, infrastructure updates, which we've done as a city, has a great job of. zoning and code updates, infrastructure updates, which we've done as a city, has a great job of, all the different types of highways and streets that we've done. The amenities that we offer, the incentives, private investment ultimately. And then what's the harvest, what's the return on that investment? Once that's established, let's keep doing that, because we have a pretty darn good track record of doing that the last 30 years. One example is the industrial park. I'll, I'll take you back, I've been here 35 years. When I first moved here, I lived in the Mobile Home Park on Ridgeway to go to college. And at that time, many of you remember, to go to the city hall, or down, down to, to the main part of the city was a two-lane road, some of it gravel. It went through the old U&amp;I golf course. And Viking Road, I think, was a gravel road. Viking Pump might have been, might have been there, standard golf. I'm trying to just kind of capture all that had happened with the industrial park, until there was a public and private investment. I was talking to Bob Seymour this morning, I think I'm accurate in saying, that CFU was the public part at that point in time, and they gave the land to the city and said, okay, here's our public investment in the industrial park. Now let's see how much private stuff we get. Well, it's obvious, from '96, I pulled these numbers, Jen gave them to me real quick. The valuation of the industrial park was almost $5 million. Few short years, it had jumped to $22 million. Quite a ways up in 2015, $275 million valuation, and then last year was 121, with the note there that, that one of the TIF areas expired. If, if someone had said today that they don't like TIF, they wouldn't like what we have in the industrial park. This is exactly the kind of public-private partnership that gets things done to where now, one of the expirations we had a few years ago generates. We mentioned the tax dollars before, as far as TIF, I know it's different, it was the blighted areas, but in this area, now we have over a million, some $2 million going into a general fund. Now it's just for economic development that council set aside a few years ago. That's the brilliancy of a public and private investment. Very briefly, I'll mention the downtown, I don't have all the numbers, but again, you can think back in the '80s, at least I do, when it was a ghost town down there. Public and private flourished. I can think of the Oster Theater, I can think of the old post office near City Hall, and a myriad of other projects on the public side that drew the, the, the private in, and now we have an award-winning downtown shops, streets, street skates, we all know we have with the wonderful Plaza as well. So how are we exceeding? We're really doing our best to communicate the clear value of economic development, especially for the future. We're guided, as I mentioned a year to you, a year ago to you folks, the Future Forward Community-Wide Strategic Plan. It's only six years old, it's a wonderful document, hundreds of stakeholders partook in putting this together. And it's, and many of the things, as I mentioned again last year, have come to pass. Give a lot of credit to those stakeholders, the elected at the time and now, to have those things come to pass. We advocate with stakeholders, navigate our unique assets, and focus and engage. Our board realized early on, almost everything can fall under the umbrella of economic development. So we really had to focus in, what can we say yes to and what should we say no to in terms of advocating and moving forward. Our partners you're familiar with, I'm sure, the city, CFU, U&amp;I, Grow Cedar Valley, all have a seat at the table at our board meetings, on our board, I should say. Community Main Street, College Hill Partnership, Black Hawk County, and the IEDA. And again, wonderful conversations with those folks, but wonderful partners as well. I'm just going to spend a minute, this is our existing Board of Directors. Folks who have made investment personally, with, with their corporations and companies who they represent, with their families, over usually, or decades here, maybe collectively, you know, a century or two. But you can see the diverse groups of organizations. We have senior living that's represented on our board, healthcare, construction development, real estate, architects, Mr. Nook, Dr. Nook, excuse me, from U&amp;I, some bankers, marketing groups. You can see CFU, previous employee Bob Seymour, IT folks, manufacturing, media, of course, the city and, and Grow Cedar Valley. My favorite day of the month is the second Thursday when we have our board meetings, because I have a wonderful group of people who are far visionary even than me. Their paradigms just are exploding my mind each and every month, and if there's issues, if there's projects, if there's strategies to go to, these are the go-to folks. And this is the public-private partnership we're looking to continue with the city. I'm now, I'm going to bring up our Vice President of our Executive Committee, the Vice President of our Board, Katie Susong, to kind of go through some of the things that we have been doing.
Thank you, Jim. I would like to just add to what Jim said about the people that comprise the CFEDC. Speaking personally, this is a group that I've gotten to know well. In the, in the time that we've met as an organization, what I have come to see in these people is authentic investment in the city of Cedar Falls. They are people that love our community, just like each of you, and want to see our community thrive. Not in the short term necessarily, but in long-term, impacting real change here in Cedar Falls. So as Jim said, my name is Katie Susong. I am the Vice Chair of the CFEDC, and I am also the CFO of Cardinal Construction. Today, I want to talk to you a little bit about change. And at the CFEDC, we believe that positive change really only comes through intention and focus. And because of that, our board has spent a lot of time since our inception really solidifying our areas of focus. And I'm going to highlight six of those for you this evening, starting with the University Avenue Corridor. Here, we will continue to investigate the opportunity to purchase College Square Mall. Project of this size and scope requires significant, significant investment and will require public and private partnership. Beyond the financial investment of a project like this, it's imperative to understand options related to viability, potential uses, zoning implications, and possible, possible, excuse me, incentives throughout the entire University Avenue Corridor to spur development. So to Jim's point, when we talk about public and private partnership, this isn't something that can be accomplished by one, but requires both, both sides of that equation. Another area of focus is housing. In terms of economic development, when we talk about housing that supports workforce, we position ourselves to be a city that businesses want to invest in. Through the Housing Needs Assessment that is actually currently underway, we really intend to establish an understanding of the needs for housing in the community, as well as potential strategies that could be employed, really in direct response to those needs. Having appropriate housing is important, but equally so is ensuring that we are a fun and vibrant place to live. And to that point, the Cedar River is an incredible community asset. We are, as the CFEDC, committed to supporting the regional effort to enhance our relationship with the river and the connectivity that it promotes. College Hill and downtown, tremendous opportunity, potential exists in the College Hill District. But as with meaningful goals, any meaningful goal, revitalization of College Hill is not going to happen overnight. Taking guidance from the Approved Vision Plan, we will, as CFEDC, work alongside key stakeholders to advocate for and support concepts and ideas that will enhance this part of our city. Thanks to the efforts of many people over a lot of years, our downtown district conversely is vibrant. We have a great downtown, we have a downtown that we can be excited about. Here, we will support Community Main Street and their vision for growth and advocate with them on their behalf as initiatives are planned. We look forward to crucial conversations that lead to thoughtful actions surrounding zoning and future development of the Cedar Falls downtown area. And finally, we will continue to promote building support for the CFEDC to ensure long-term sustainability. Since July 2021, we have made tremendous progress in a variety of different areas. But as a new organization, it was important to devote an appropriate amount of time to foundational activities, like defining our mission, our vision, priorities, and goals. Additionally, everything from establishing operational policy and procedure to creating a logo, a website, all of our marketing materials, all of that stuff takes time to put in place. But for the most part, all of that's complete. So moving forward, we are energized and we are excited, unified around a shared vision. There's still a lot to be done, but we are excited to keep working. The success of CFEDC is largely dependent on investment, both by our board members as well as our vital community partners. And we are incredibly grateful for the support that we've received, so we thank you for that. That is all I have this evening, so I will pass it back over to Jim. Thank you very much for your time.
There's just a couple more slides to cover here, as you know in your packet. We are asking for a contract amendment. Last year's contract with the city was somewhat duplicated with Grow Cedar Valley's contract, and as was described there, it was early in the conversations of what the CFEDC would be doing. We had the concepts, we had ideas, we had discussions of vision, and of course, raising money was the ultimate goal, to see what this thing looks like. We would like to amend the agreement, reflecting the six points above that you've seen tonight and valuing the continuing public-private partnership between the city and the CFEDC. The request for the city council, to the city council, is a continued public-private partnership to fund this fiscal year like last year, from the city's economic development account of $75,000. The second point, I kind of put in the packet early, and then I just sort of thought, you know, I'd love to have the conversations ongoing with council, potentially putting together somewhat of a CIP for the CFEDC, a little alphabet soup there, over the next three years, just to give an idea of all the things that we know are coming, planning for, need to be budgeted, which I'd mentioned down below there, the studies, feasibility, the gaps, and working with various entities throughout the community. So I, again, thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Jim and Katie. Does council have any questions for Jim Brown or Katie Susong?
I have a question.
Susan?
Jim, last year, when you, you came forward, I thought you said it was going to be a one-time ask, but now you're asking for up to three years, is that right?
The ask for the three years isn't specifically an ask, Sue, it would be more on-the-radar screen, because we didn't want it to be an annual ask, or at least, I think last year it was unique because you folks decided to compromise and split the 150 in the Economic Development Fund, 75 to us, and it still is available for staff. That's the main reason for this evening, but why not try to expand it? If you folks see some value in that upcoming, for the various things that we'll pay for, for the different development opportunities, I'd love to be able to bring it forward to you folks.
Can I ask one other question? You marked on the, on the slide that had the pyramid where you filled in the middle. You kind of said that your, your goal or your role was developmental partnerships, PP Capital Formation, and Redevelopment Projects? And were there any of those to tell us about, were there any redevelopment projects that you guys took part in?
We have discussed some of the redevelopments with tax incentives for a few different projects with a realtor here in town on Main Street, potentially on Clay Street as well. So partnering, advocating for, as far as digging in, for the tax incentives from the state, we're working on that also, and I'm going to forget its name. Housing tax credits, is it something else that we need to take a look at? We looked at it about a year ago, or maybe six months ago. We're called by EnterCog, sort of the, the donut hole, that we don't have a housing tax incentive. But we can have one, it's a separate board, it helps with the different types of area for workforce housing. So a long answer to your question, we've worked and discussed some of these factors. I think we'll get a couple of them done once the Housing Need Assessment's completed.
Thank you.
Sorry, we're back to having mutes on our microphones. I guess one thing I do want to, that I appreciate and that I want to point out is, because this year, we all, well, we were invited to go to the League of Cities Annual Gathering, and it's nice to sit with leaders from all around the state who surprisingly have some of the same problems we have. But to hear about their successes, and, and one of the successes that was talked about over and over again when I went to a Housing Needs Conference or Workshop, I should say, was some of the ideas in, in some of the cities around the state have done them and had great success, is the Housing Needs Assessment. So if we recall, last year, we polled that as a council, it was voted to pull that out of our budget. So I guess what I'm looking, what I'm getting at, not so eloquently, is I appreciate that your group recognized the importance of that, especially as those of us who are very much in the workforce struggle to have people to work with us. And so I, I look at that like, right there, that would have been, I believe it was budgeted at $35,000 when we polled it, and thankfully, you folks took the ball. And so I guess what I'm getting at is that there was a great return, I believe, for our, our money. Because that, I think, is going to be very beneficial to our community.
Thank you very much, and I'll give credit to my board, because when that was pulled from the budget, you know, they decided to do the agent, the Housing Need Assessment. Granted, some of the dollars we have are the city dollars that you gave us. It wasn't part of our budgeting process, we had to adjust that a little bit, because we'll see some more of those studies coming, depending upon the work that we pick up. But yeah, I'll give credit to the board to take a look at that and, and move on it.
Any other questions?
Thank you again, very much.
Saying none, thanks, Jim, thanks, Katie. We'll move on now to the High School Swimming Pool with Tracy Molinaro and Lorelei Redfern.
Yes, that's great. Hi, I'm Tracy Molinaro, and I'm here with Lorelei Redfern, who's part of a group called Jump In. We're a community group. And we're here also with Andy Petit, that's part of the school district. And we would like to ask for your help in bringing a new naddatorium, which was, which is an indoor pool, to Cedar Falls. This is a transformational quality-of-life project, which will make our community an even greater place to live. It's a collaboration between school, city, and community in a way that is unprecedented across our state, signaling broad support as well as efficient use of resources. We clearly need an indoor pool in Cedar Falls, and the window of opportunity is here. So in the next few minutes, we will talk about that and address some specifics. First off, we have a terrible pool situation in Cedar Falls. We are below average for a community of our size and stature. Let's look at the two public pools here in Cedar Falls, which are Pete and Holmes. The Pete Pool will be closing in the next two years, and the Holmes Pool has substantial subterranean issues. These pools are heavily used, they're popular, they're open from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. More programs want in than they can accommodate. These pools, and all the pools actually highlighted in yellow here, are 45 years or older. They're approaching their end life, they break down frequently, air quality's poor, they're dank, dreary, undesirable, and outdated. We want to avoid a situation here where the pool falls into the ground, which basically, sounds crazy, but it literally happened in Dubuque two years ago. It just heaved into the ground, it rendered itself irreparable and left that community without a pool. Now, you'll also see there that we do have a pool at U&amp;I. It's a relatively decent pool, it's 20 years old, but that doesn't do the citizens of Cedar Falls any good. This pool is not open to the public, it's not open for public lap swim, it's not open for public swim lessons, nor is it open for club teams. It's unfortunate, but a reality we have to deal with. Everyone here knows that if we're going to be the community we aspire to be, we have to have a decent indoor pool. Guys, this is just basic infrastructure for any attractive community. We have to have a public pool, which is on par with other basics, similar to having a public library or public safety. We have to have these basics. It's clear based on the last census that the Cedar Valley is not growing. From 2010 to 2021, the population declined in Black Hawk County by .6%. And while Cedar Falls had a small 3% growth. declined in Blackhawk County by .6%. And while Cedar Falls had a small 3% growth in that period, Cedar Falls' results significantly underperformed as compared to the greater Des Moines area, Cedar Rapids, Ames, and Iowa City. And these are the communities we normally compare ourselves to. These numbers should be a cause for concern. We're just not as competitive in attracting and retaining families as we would like to be. Better quality-of-life amenities are a big part of the differential between our community and these communities that are growing much more at a faster pace than us. A quality indoor pool is something we really need, as are some of the other things you've done, like improving the riverfront. Swimming is the most popular kid and family recreational activity. Water recreation is important in Cedar Falls. Cedar Falls is the home of the Falls Aquatic Center. So two points here. Water safety is important. Every kid needs an opportunity to learn to swim. Drowning is the leading cause of death of youth, according to the Iowa Department of Health. And second, we're in a lifeguard crisis in this country. It's impacted all of Iowa. It's impacted the Cedar Valley. We've seen a reduction of pool hours and closures. In fact, the Falls Aquatic Center closed three weeks early this year. Now, how does a pool affect this? 80 to 90% of our lifeguards come from competitive swim programs. If we don't have adequate swim facilities, we won't have adequate swim programs, and then we won't have adequate lifeguards and swim instructors to keep the Falls Aquatic Center vibrant and to keep our community safe. The city conducted a rec center survey a couple years ago, and the number one item respondents wanted was improved aquatic facilities and access. That's what your constituents have been telling you. It's not just me, it's others. Now, I suppose, at this point, you could have spent about $8 to $10 million, the city, and built a marginal three-to-four lane limited-use pool. But you didn't do that, because you knew that would not satisfy all the community needs, nor would it bring visitors to Cedar Falls. And it wouldn't be something we could really be proud of, which really goes to the beauty of this collaboration. City, school, and community, all working together to build something great. We avoid duplication. Both governmental entities aren't building their own same identical pools. This results in responsible and efficient use of taxpayer funds. Now, here's a list of several new pools built recently in other communities. And as you can see, many of these pools are those high-growth areas that I talked about earlier. And you also see some pools here in other areas, like Dubuque and Mason City. So we can conclude here that, you know, this is not out of the ordinary, the fact that we want to build a pool in our area. It's happening all across the state of Iowa. If we build this pool, we have an opportunity to attract about 3,000 people a year to Cedar Falls. And that translates into $1.2 million of economic benefit each year. You take that times 50, and that will be $60 million of economic benefit. We can bring to Cedar Falls for the life of the pool facility, $60 million. We need to keep our area competitive with our peers. We need to grow. We don't need to shrink. This will help us combat the brain drain we are experiencing. And now I'm going to turn it over to Lorelei.
Good evening. I'm Lorelei Redfern. I'm here to give you an overview of the naderatorium design, costs, as well as some of the financing aspects. I'm also here to demonstrate to you tonight that the naderatorium that we're proposing, or actually, will be under construction, is unique. It is not huge. It is comparable in size and capacity to new pools in Dubuque, Lynnmar, and Marshalltown. Furthermore, it is not only a school district facility. It is designed with city input specifically for community use. This slide will show you some of the key community use features. We have two pools in one facility. The larger pool is a 10-lane, 25-yard-by-25-meter pool with 1-meter diving boards, and its use will be for competition, lap swim, recreational, and educational use. The second pool is separate from the main pool. It is a four-lane, 25-yard pool. It will have warmer temperature, which is ideal for young learners, as well as for the elderly, and as well as for therapy programs. And it will have a separate temperature control from the larger pool. It's also shallower, which is ideal for lessons and city programs for youth. And it also has ramp access that will allow people to wade in, or allow people to enter by wheelchair directly into the pool. Another community use feature is specifically a family locker room in addition to the traditional men's and women's locker rooms. What is the most important community feature of the naderatorium? It is daytime public access. There is a dedicated public entrance, separate from the school. You can see that in the lower right-hand corner of the slide here. And there is also dedicated public parking, separate from the school again, with a pickup-and-drop-off circle. Again, we have true handicap access to the facility, something that we don't have currently, either at Pete or at Holmes. There will be nearby handicap parking spots, an elevator to the deck level, as well as to the spectator level, and again, as I mentioned, ramp access to the smaller pool. What does this facility add to Cedar Falls? Well, you heard earlier about the desire to make this a fun and vibrant community, a good place to live, and this is part of that. In addition to providing for water safety, this will also give quality-of-life opportunities. You can see that the programs listed here, some of which are offered currently at our indoor pools, however, many of which cannot be and are desired by residents of Cedar Falls. In addition to the important programs that can be offered, the most important community focus of this is that public daytime access will add 70 hours of program timing every week that we don't have currently. The programming drafts show that the public will use the facility 70% of the time, and the school district 30% of the time. I'd like to go over next some of the cost issues, collaborative financing, and timing. But before I get into the numbers, I want to give you a few points regarding collaboration and all its aspects. What is happening here in Cedar Falls is unique, and you really are to be commended for the work that you already have committed to do in collaboration with the school district. All other recently-built pools in Iowa that we are aware of are either school-only or private-only. No other community in Iowa has been able to work cooperatively in the way that Cedar Falls has in the past, and the way that we hope you will continue to do. The city and the school district have a long history, almost 50 years, of collaborative operation of Pete and Holmes indoor pools through a 28E intergovernmental joint services and facilities agreement for shared use and expenses of the facilities. The bottom line is that by working together, this results in a far better facility than either the city or the school district could build on their own. Now, looking at the numbers, you will see here that we have a $21 million estimated total cost of the facility. That's an uncomfortable number, and it's much larger than the number that existed when we first started working on this project. The increase in cost is attributable to COVID-related building material and construction cost increases. And we're here today to show you that we have a path forward to have this facility built, and we need your help to get that done. Currently, the school district has committed $8 million in funds to the project, and the city has committed $5.1 million. We are asking you today to increase the city commitment to a total of $8 million, which would be an additional $2.9 million in city funding. The community has been asked to raise funds of $3.3 million. I'm here to tell you, we've had a great response. To date, we've raised $2.6 million, which means that we have $700,000 left. And I want you to know that your constituents are stepping up to the plate to get this done. 57% of the funds raised are from individuals. That means that you have a very strong indicator of community support for this facility, and so far, private funds are matching city funds 50 cents to the dollar. Furthermore, the city is getting a bargain. You will get 70% of the pool use for only 38% of the total facility cost. We're asking you also not to delay funding. Remember the $1.7 million gap that you saw on the previous slide? We have a plan also to address that, but it is dependent, in large part, on your additional funding in the amount of $2.9 million. We know that we have an opportunity to apply for a community attraction and tourism grant, along with some county funding. However, the requirements to receive that grant are to have this be last-dollar-in funding. And without your assistance, we do not have an opportunity to apply for that grant and to receive money from the state to help fund this facility. We also know that the Blackhawk County Gaming Foundation is prepared to receive an application for funding for, for this facility. If we delay further, costs will only increase. The longer you wait, the more likely we are to face the loss of Pete, or Holmes, or both pools. Pete pool space is particularly needed for classroom space. If you've been by recently, I'm sure you've noticed the portable in the front yard of Pete. A few other factors. Our existing grant awards that we've received, many of those have time limitations for completion of the facility. And in addition, all of those were given with the expectation that the pool would actually be built, not only the shell of the building. And failure to provide funding for this facility will also negatively impact further fundraising efforts, as well as payment of pledges. This gives you a breakdown of where we are in terms of construction. The school board has approved bids for Phase 1, which is approximately $16.1 million, and that is for only the shell of the building, the exterior, the plumbing, and the heating and air conditioning systems. Phase 2, which is the pools themselves, will not progress until the additional funds are available. So our ask to you is to please seize the opportunity that is presented here in terms of funding, timing, and need, and increase your city funding commitment to a total of $8 million. We greatly appreciate your consideration, and now we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Tracy and Lorelei. Council, do you have any questions? Kelly?
I, I have a question. So, and I guess it's more maybe to city staff. What would the cost, I think the, there was a mention of $8 to $10 million was maybe an estimate, I would assume, maybe years ago, for a pool, for the city to go on its own? Is that still about, is that, would that be about what it would be if we went on our own, or, I'm assuming that that probably has gone up if that was years ago?
I can't quite remember what year the, the study was done, and it was just in a real ballpark cost estimate when that was, was completed. But I can't imagine that we could get an indoor pool facility completed for those dollars.
Okay. And then my other question was, and again, maybe this isn't, but if we did build a facility on our own, would it be a facility that, like, large events would happen at, or would it just simply be a facility that, you know, we have swim lessons? I mean, what I'm getting at is, it would be, would it be a facility that would have the potential of bringing in visitors to attend an event, but also leave dollars in our community? Do we know that?
I, I think that really depends on how you design the facility. You know, if you're going to design it for just little kids' lap swim, then, then no. I think that's kind of the beauty of, of what the school district and what the participants have done in this particular case, is they've looked at sizing this facility for the community, not just for what the school district would be. But also, I think, one of the conversations is that the, the pool facility itself, I, I think you guys can probably answer this, but we don't, we aren't, don't have the capability in Cedar Falls to hold meets, to hold those type of things right now. And this would be one of those opportunities where you can bring other school districts in. You may be able to speak to that a little better than I can.
We can give a little information from the, the city aspect and community aspect, as well as high school. For example, this past summer, the Summer Sizzler was hosted at the Falls. And we have a very good reputation here in Cedar Falls for being able to run a good swim meet. We were able to bring in 600 swimmers from five states for a multi-day swim meet. All of those swimmers, and their families, and their fans, stayed in hotels here, ate at restaurants, spent money, had, had a great time here in Cedar Falls. In the past, the local swim team has been able to host three or four swim meets a year at Holmes. And while those meets typically have not been quite that large, we will have the capability to host larger meets if we have an adequate pool. We don't believe that the city on its own could build a facility that meets the needs for that type of attraction.
Yeah, currently, like, even the school district, we couldn't host our conference meet with our pool facilities. You can't host any decent swim meet with only a six-lane pool. You need to have eight lanes at a minimum. And now all the modern pools also have cooldown areas and warm-up areas, something we don't have. Also, you might want to look at Ames. Ames, the city of Ames, is looking at building their own pool, because the, the school built its pool and didn't include the city. And they're looking at $20, $25 million for their pool.
Thank you. That helps.
Councilman Schultz?
Yeah, I do have a few questions. Thanks a lot. That's a lot of great information. So how many lanes are you proposing? Is this an eight or a 10? I don't.
This is, this would be a 10-lane competition pool, and a four-lane therapeutic pool.
Which is a separate pool?
Yes, it'd be a separate pool.
You've mentioned Holmes and Pete. They were built in 1977, and that Pete is in need of classroom space. Is that the proposal, is to eliminate and, and tear down those two pools, or not have pools at Doctors in His Back? They would be gone, be this the central pool at the high school?
Correct.
Okay. I have a security question, then. With 70% activity from the public, what exactly is the separation between the, the pool and the school, and interaction that you could have between the two?
I don't know if it'll show up here again, but I have the slide that shows the floor plan of the pool area. And if you look at the kind of upper right-hand corner in, of both of those plans, you'll see that's the entrance, and that is located on the upper northeast corner of the high school area. The school itself is actually not directly connected to the pool. There is instead a connection to the stadium that's going up, and that would be down in the lower left-hand corner. And so the, the facility is somewhat connected, but basically independent of the school building itself. And I suppose Andy could answer some additional questions on that if need be.
Okay. So, Doctor, I'm going to ask you to shine off your crystal ball and look into a 10-year or longer plan. Is this the pool we're going to centralize, or do you foresee yourself coming back and saying, "We need one at Pete, and we need one at Holmes, or we need one somewhere else"?
No, this would be the centralized pool. We see this as a 50-year investment into the community. That's certainly going to meet the needs, not only short-term, but long-term. Our intent would be, the pools at the time, through a bond referendum in 1976, I believe, when those built, those two pools were built then in 1977, it was really a compromise to be able to have two pools in two parts of the community. I think this is a time where that can be centralized, and certainly, we can have a facility that exceeds And certainly, we can have a facility that exceeds expectations now and into the future by having everything consolidated with efficiency and the ability to not only have recreational opportunities, but school opportunities as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Councilman Gannfield?
He got it. All right. I just want to go in record and say, "I'm in favor of this pool. I want this pool for our community. I think it's a great idea, and I think it is a basic need." Having said that, I have some concerns with no animosity intended here. Mrs. Malero, you even called this a basic need. I have concerns, why did we not see this as a basic need with our school building? I mean, a school pool is a basic need for a community. Why wasn't it included? My assessment, I guess the rumor mill says that this was removed intentionally, and now we have to pay for it. Problem is, I don't have a big enough checkbook. So why was this not a basic need four years ago with the referendum?
Yeah, so we went through multiple iterations with the referendum, and it was never included in the referendum. We always said, I think very transparently, that this had to be a community conversation because the school district do not utilize the pools solely. The community utilizes the pools within our community. So we said, "This needs to be not only a city of Cedar Falls conversation, it needs to be a school district conversation as well as our community conversation about what is the best use as we look to the future for pools." We didn't think that was the right conversation to have the school determine and bond for the pool projects. We thought it needed to be done through this process to be able to have, I think, good conversations and multiple people from the city, from our community, from our swim programs, from the school district sit down and look at what that looks like for long-term viability.
Sure. Okay. Another question, if I may. I had a good conversation with another stakeholder in the community, and I didn't know if we had reached out to Western Home Communities. Knowing that they have a therapeutic pool, I think there's some benefit to be had with an intergenerational and integral community asset. Have we approached the Western Home Communities about their assets and using the pool on the therapy side just for possible funding sources? If we haven't, would you consider asking them to join the fight as well?
The Western Home Pool is a lovely pool. It's four lanes. The water temperature is 95 degrees, which is actually a little too warm for almost every activity. And so we don't anticipate the smaller pool being quite that warm. We have not had specific discussions with Western Home to invite them to be a member of this project. Obviously, Western Home members can use this pool also for any recreational or lap swimming activity that they would desire. I don't know if that answers your question.
My speculation there is that Western Home Communities probably has a bigger checkbook than I do. So there's potential for partnership there. In additional, just strategizing, thinking through partnership opportunities here, just off the cuff, brainstorming here, if we did end the blighted TIF in downtown and freed up 2 million dollars, even if a third of that went to the school, that's 680,000 dollars a year coming back to the school. And in four years, that covers your 2.9 million. If we ended the blighted TIF district downtown, would that be able to fund this? If we couldn't come up with more than the 5.1, would that help fund this in your general fund to offset the shortfall?
So, I don't know much about TIFs. My limited knowledge is what it impacts our school budget when TIFs are enacted. So, I can't answer that question. Sorry.
It's kind of a mutual ask, I suppose. Again, it's just brainstorming. But thinking strategically about how to pay for this pool, is that an option? That's even in the realm of conceivably helpful? Jen or Ron?
So that was just kind of sprung on us, so I don't want to commit to anything. I think one of the biggest things that you do is by doing that, you handicap the city a little bit by taking away one of the only, if not the only, economic development tools that you'd have in that area. So, those are just an initial thought.
Yeah, we'd lose all that incentivizing for development. So we'd have to figure out a way to do that better or differently, correct?
Differently, yes.
Correct. Thanks.
Mrs. Sires?
Yes, Councilman Schultz?
Mr. Gaines, so we wouldn't have to end the TIF. We would just be able to take or direct that money that would take, that 500,000, for example, that you've been pulling. We could redirect that? Or I'd rather not talk about ending that TIF?
Yeah, it's hard to speculate some of that stuff just on the fly here. I think there are some additional ways that we can address funding if that's what the council chooses to do. I think we do have some ideas. So, we were prepared to talk about those specifically at goal-setting.
It's probably a better avenue for it as well. Thank you.
Yes. Councilman? Daryl?
Thank you. So, you mentioned 70% used by citizens. It's school district-owned, as I understand. And then you dictate 70% of the time can be used by the public. How set in stone is that? I mean, can it be a case where you're going to say, "Well, the school has enough swim interest, and they want to expand," and then taper off what the public can do? I had somebody mention that the UNI pool, they thought at one point, was supposed to be used by the public as well. But I don't know if anybody can speak to that, but that's what I was told. So, I'll throw that out first then.
I can take the first stab at this. Really, that's what the breakdown is now. What happens with the pools? We have an agreement in place with the city that they run all of the recreational components of the pool, any of the birthday parties, things like that. That goes through the city recreational department. So, all of the kayaking courses, scuba courses, name your aquatic activities, go through the city now. And again, it's a great partnership, and it's something that is unique to Cedar Falls. Would we ever end that? No, we just see that as expanding. Because now with our pools, we can't have visitors during the day because of the security reasons. This has been designed to allow for community use during the day. Scheduling will be sometimes a challenge where we might need to have some swim lessons, some of our PE classrooms. But those will be well-scheduled in advance, be able to say during this day, during these three weeks, from 1:15 to 2:45, the pool will be closed for community use or community rec because of the school use. But again, that's just coming down to scheduling and setting that well in advance. But we believe that this will be much more readily used by the community than what we currently have.
I'll add to that also, that in the past, you've had a 28E agreement that's been renewed annually between the school district and the city council that sets forth in general what the schedule and the time allocation is, as well as the cost allocations for maintenance and repair and so on. And that's been reviewed and approved by the council each year. So I think that if you would have concerns, you'd be able to raise those as that is up for renewal.
So you hit on the next question of the maintenance. And I'm assuming user fees are such that it'll cover the maintenance for both aspects? The school's maintenance input, you know, and that sort of thing?
Yeah, that's in a 28E that goes back to 1977, actually. And those are splits. I don't recall specifically what the split is, but I think it's roughly like 60/40. The district picks up for 60% of the maintenance costs, utility costs, things like that, with the city picking up 40%.
And then lastly, the user fees themselves, competitive? I mean, if we're going to have a new pool, the user fees presumably will just cover the cost of operating it as an enterprise fund as opposed to help pay for it? Or how do you?
Yeah, I think what's really unique about the situation that we have, all those fees go to the city because, again, it's run through the city rec department. So as a school district, we don't see those unless it's a direct rental from the school, which I can't think of a time that's happened in my 10 years in the district. Because, again, that's something that runs through the city through the rec department. And it's just a great partnership that we have in place. We would have to look at that just to see when you have 14 lanes of pool compared to potential eight lanes that's rented now for either birthday parties or even big events or things like that. We would need to look at that. But we can do that in a strategic way with looking at Ames and Dubuque and Marshalltown and Sioux Land, Sioux City, and all the new aquatic centers that have been built across the state.
Thank you very much. Dr. Patty, is there anything you'd like to add for about a minute?
One minute. First off, thanks to these two great ladies here. Their work is immense. Thanks to the city council and staff for your leadership. When I talk to others who pretend across the state and say, "Hey, do you partner with your city on some of these things?" And their response is, "No, there's no way we would partner with our city on this. It's way too much of a headache scheduling, trying to arrange budgets, trying to think strategically and into the future." We're unique in Cedar Falls because we do do those things. We have a long history of those. And it's really good for our citizens. It's good for our community. It's good for our taxpayers because we are efficient and we are effective in doing the right work for the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for the presentation. Our schools are very important to us here in Cedar Falls. That will end our Economic Development Committee portion for tonight. We'll re-adjourn at 7 o'clock for our council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.